Good evening. I'm going to go ahead and call our regular meeting. It's our first meeting of the year to order. I just welcome each and every one of you. We haven't had this many people since we talked about taxes in Burke County. And I just really thank you all for coming out. And I know there's an issue tonight that's very passionate. And we, again, we're here to listen to you all. And I'll just say to our clerk, all the commissioners are present, county manager, the attorneys are here. And if you have your mobile device on, I would ask you to please silence it. And when you come up to speak, please speak into the microphone. Our invocation tonight will be by the pastor Jesse Carr, Walker Road Baptist Church. And then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by the great Adventures 4-H Club, Lisa Thompson, the club leader. So would you all please rise for the invocation?
Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, let me say thank you so much for the honor to be with you and pray tonight. You get a crowd this size together, and I'm tempted to take up an offering. So we'd better pray. Let's pray. Father God, we come before you tonight acknowledging that in our hearts, we are all rebels who have looked at your will and have said to you, "Not your will, but ours be done." But Lord, we also tonight take deep hope in the gospel of the Lord Jesus that tells us we have been made righteous through his obedience to you because he said to you in the garden, "Not my will, but thine be done." Lord, we rejoice tonight that he willingly took the cup of your judgment from your hand, and he drank damnation dry so that we could be blessed and be forgiven, and so that we could be heard when we pray to you through him. So now, Lord, we pray in Jesus' name that you would accomplish all of your purposes in this meeting. We are thankful, Lord, for those who serve us in different aspects of our local government. Lord, we know from your word that they are your servants, and they are doing your will in the world. And we pray for them, that you would bless them and bless their families, give them wisdom so that they could lead and serve well, so that God's people in Burke County could live a quiet and peaceable life. Lord, we pray that even as they govern, sometimes maybe your will isn't clear. Father, I pray that you'd forgive them and forgive all of us of our missteps and lead us, Lord, we pray, in paths of righteousness for your name's sake. Lord, we pray for your safety on those that serve us in and around our county. Bless our EMS workers, our teachers, our police and fire personnel, different administrators. Help us to honor them and help us, Lord, to seek to bless them and serve them as they serve and bless us. Lord, you know tonight our makeup. You know that in the end, we're but dust. We are prone to wander from your will, and we're often enticed by our own desires. Forgive us. Make your will clear to us. Teach us to do your will throughout our daily lives in this county. We pray in Jesus' name tonight that you would have your will in our schools and churches, businesses and homes in this great county. We are so blessed to be part of Burke County. We're blessed to live here and to work here and to play here and enjoy our lives here. So help us, Lord, to be people that do justice and love mercy and walk humbly with you. Lord, I want to pray tonight for our churches. We are blessed with such a rich tradition of faith in this county. But Lord, I would pray tonight that it would not merely be a connection to what people who have gone before us have believed. But I would pray that it would be a real connection to a living Savior. Bless us with a season of gospel renewal in our churches. And Lord, I pray that as you do, that our county would be all the better for it. And Lord, we ask all these things in the name of Jesus, who loved us and who gave himself for our sins. And amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'll just ask you all to stand up there. We're going to come down and take a picture with you all. Lisa, were y'all going to do your 4-H?
Uh, we don't have to.
Do you have anybody else wanting to take a picture? All right. Item number four under our agenda is approval of meeting minutes. And we have four sets of meetings. And I don't see any reason why we can't approve those all in one motion if there's no changes or deletions or additions to those minutes. Be happy to accept a motion to do that.
Salute, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Maynard made the motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It passes five to zero. All right. We have a presentation. I'm sorry. Approval of the agenda is amended tonight. Under our agenda, we have, let's see here, decision item number one is from HR, is approval of broker record for employee insurance. And that's going to be presented by Rhonda Lee. And then we have a removal of Randy Wabel appointment to the local emergency planning committee. Consent item number 10, no application was received from him, and there is no change to the rest of the agenda items. And then under consent item number five, appointment to BDI to decision item number two, a second application was received from Ron Lewis for consideration. And with that, I'll be happy to accept a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Go move.
All right. You all heard the motion by Jack. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That passes five to zero. We have a presentation tonight from Partners. And Tara Conrad is going to do the presenting for that, the regional director. Tara, how you doing tonight? Good.
Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to come and speak on behalf of an award that was received for a provider, treatment provider here in Morganton, as well as Partners' Behavioral Health Management. If you recall, in 2014, Partners' Behavioral Health Management started holding community meetings with our stakeholders, families and others to inquire about service needs and how to best access those treatment services. So we wanted to serve individuals that were seeking care, but we wanted to be able to serve them both behavioral, with behavioral health services, as well as physical health services. We wanted to process to access those services to be seamless for whoever presents at the door. The result came in 2015 with the creation of Burke Integrated Health, which is a program designed to treat the whole person. The goal was to allow individuals seeking help to have same-day access to services and supports they needed, whether they scheduled appointments in advance or showed up at the facility. We wanted to reduce wait times for appointments and to reduce the fragmentation of services with the goal that this will increase treatment engagement for those in need. Our goal was accomplished through the efforts of many, including our four treatment providers that are located at the Burke Integrated Health. Those providers are Caring Alternative, Burke Primary Care, Catawba Valley Behavioral Health, and the Cognitive Connection, along with Community Care of North Carolina or Access Care here in Morganton. From the opening in May of 2015 through December 31st of 2015, we had 682 new people being treated at Burke Integrated Health. Now, this is very meaningful if you consider that many of those individuals being served used to receive their primary services through the emergency departments. At Burke, since being linked with Burke Integrated Health, patients have been able to maintain low hospitalization rates. They are now associated with a behavioral health provider so they know who to call and where to go if they're experiencing a mental health crisis. So others across the state have recognized the value in treating both the physical health and the behavioral health within the same facility. As such, the North Carolina Council of Community Mental Health, Development Mental Disabilities and Substance Abuse Programs recognized the innovation and effectiveness of this approach and awarded Partners' Behavioral Health Management and Burke Integrated Health with the Program of Excellence Awards and Care Integration in December of 2015. So we're proud to be a part of this and the process of bringing more treatment and better treatment to the citizens in Burke that are in need of mental health, behavioral health, and physical health services.
Good. Thank you, Tara.
Any questions?
Maynard, you still on that board? You got any comments?
He is.
You've been on that board a long time, if I can remember.
This award that they got for Burke County, every county doesn't participate, but we were number one in that category. And a lot of the other counties are using our system, Partners Health System, to start theirs up in their county. But the head, Paul, down here, and I was going to pick on Paul a little bit, but maybe you know the answer. But I think it's important that everybody is aware that Partner Health has just done fantastic. And they have served, they served more than we did as individuals. And they've saved, at this point, I think, better than $30 million for the year, or something like that. Do you know that number, Rhonda?
You're close. And what we're doing with our savings is reinvesting back into the communities to start programs such as the integrated health centers across our counties and various other things. But thank you. And we couldn't do it without the support we received from you guys.
And it's growing. It's just the people we got ahead of that, just doing a fantastic job. And we're hoping that we don't have to consolidate anymore. There was a scare last year that we'd be joining up with other counties. But hopefully, it'll stay the way it is because it's very manageable, and it's running smoothly. And we've got a lot of good people working for the system.
We're with you and hoping that, too.
Good. Thank you, Maynard. Any other comments or questions? If not, thank you, Tara. And we congratulate you and just keep up the good work. And we thank you so much. I can remember when we had a lot, years ago, we had a lot of problems when we talked about merger and all that.
Oh, yeah.
But just, again, thank you for all the good work. We appreciate you all.
Mr. Chairman, I think a round of applause and appreciation for that award.
Our next item of business, item seven, is a scheduled public hearing. And with that, we'll ask Pete Minter to come to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board. I'd like to present zoning map amendment, ZMA 2015-07. This is carrying over from last year when the rezoning was first submitted. And this applicant, his name is Richard Epley. And the request is zoning map amendment to rezone 2.4 acres of land corresponding to PIN number 2742084979, located at the corner of Millstone Avenue and Bear Street in Love Lady Township, Burke County. The request is to rezone the property from R3, which it currently is, to the general business zoning district. And the site analysis for this property, as I mentioned, is 2.4 acre tract. There are no existing structures on this parcel, no utilities on the parcel at this time. If we can pull up the map, there is an overview of the area with the subject parcel outlanded in red. And you can see the existing land uses in that area, which by our report, shows a mixture of wooded, residential, commercial. There's many warehouses in the area, a cell tower in the area, and as I mentioned, a mixture of zoning, which we can see on the next map. Predominantly, it's zoned R3 in that area, which also shows a general business to the east, almost adjoining it there, and also to the north on the other side of I-40. But predominantly, it's zoned R3 in that area. This is also within the I-40 overlay district of the county. And that is what comprehensive plan is being used to look at this property as it meets the zoning standards. The I-40 corridor plan mentions that this intersection or interstate interchange, I should say, would be exit 111 and is a number-one priority according to the plan for improvements as it's not up to NCDOT current standards. There has been contact made with NCDOT to see if there are any current plans to redesign this interchange. And those plans are not even drawn at this point in time. There are still a priority to redesign this interchange, but no formal plans at this time. The I-40 plan that I referenced mentioned that no zoning changes be made to this area until the interchange is redesigned. But when DOT was asked about this, they stated that the plans were so far out at this time that they did not see any problem with any rezoning of this area. They also brought up the fact that if any development plan were submitted for the subject property, it would have to be reviewed by DOT. And DOT would, at that time, look at whatever amendments or changes had to be done in order to work into their plan to make this a safe traveling environment down Millstone Avenue there. So DOT did not have any objection to a rezoning, and they would look at any future development plan. Staff's review also would incorporate looking at different things, such as beyond traffic. It would look at also screening, buffering, site amenities, septic, public water, things of that nature. Whenever a development plan would come into our office, we review for many different things. The I-40 overlay district would have to, would have to come into play as far as our site plan review. And so therefore, the development would have to correspond and be compliant with that development plan. So at this juncture, planning department and staff could say that this rezoning could be appropriate, considering the fact that it is located at an interstate interchange, which is usually commercial development, industrial development at those interchanges. The I-40 plan also would review any development to make it consistent with those standards that are in place. So staff would recommend approval of this rezoning at this time. Entertain any questions that you might have.
Good. Thank you, Pete. Before we have any questions, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. And does anybody wish to speak to this agenda item tonight? If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And we'll, commissioners, any questions for Pete on this rezoning?
Mr. Chairman, Pete, on the North Carolina DOT, and that exit, you made a statement in that there was no plans, formal plans to change or do anything with that exit. Is that correct?
That's correct at this time.
Does that exit actually touch this partial of land?
It does not. The exit is actually to the east, probably about a quarter mile, eighth to a quarter mile is the exit. It turns back to the west, and you go down Millstone Avenue about, like I said, eighth a mile till you get to this property here. It's actually located between where you would exit and where you would travel to get across I-40 over that overpass, I guess you'd call it.
And your board heard this and voted five to zero in favor of?
That's correct. And I do have some photos of the subject property, if you had cared to see that.
Good. Any other questions for Pete? If not, what is the pleasure of the commissioners on this rezoning?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt an ordinance amending the official Burke County zoning map as it relates to ZMA 2015-07, and a further move to adopt zoning consistency statement that the proposed zoning map amendment can be considered consistent with the Burke County I-40 corridor plan and the Burke County zoning ordinance, and is reasonable and in the public interest because the 2003 I-40 corridor plan encourages economic development strategies in areas along the I-40 corridor, US 70, and other areas where the county expects growth. There's existing non-residential zoning in close vicinity to the subject property. Therefore, the proposed rezoning would meet statutory requirements. Though the plan recommended no zoning changes be made to the area surrounding the interchange until it is redesigned, it should be noted that this recommendation was made in 2003. NCDOT has recently stated that they still do not have any formal plans to redesign exit 111 interchange. And the NCDOT has provided us a written statement indicating that a rezoning of this partial should have no effect on the redesigning project.
Good. Thank you, Johnny, for that motion. Again, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those likewise, that passes five to zero. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
All right. Item eight is informal public comments. And I know we have quite a group here tonight to speak. And before we allow speakers, I want our county attorney, it's probably, everybody's probably on the same issue with the Bella issue. But I'd like our county attorney to say a few words of what's been going on today on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question of the dog that's named Bella that was taken to the Burke County Animal Shelter over the weekend, a week ago, has now resulted in a lawsuit that's been filed against the sheriff, against the county, and against the lady who claimed ownership at the time the dog was taken in by Ms. Candy Ann Bowman, who is the lady from the newspaper reports who claims that the dog is hers. That lawsuit was filed today. Plaintiff had requested a temporary restraining order, and the court heard the plaintiff's request and granted a restraining order restraining the sheriff and the animal shelter from destroying the dog until a hearing could be held on the matter. And a hearing was set for Friday of this week at 9:00 a.m. in the courthouse. The plaintiff posted a bond to be held to pay for any cost to the county of holding the animal on the county's behalf at the judge's order. So that is where we are right now. There'll be a hearing on Friday to see whether to continue the restraining order until trial. And at trial, the issue will be determined, who is the rightful owner of the dog named Bella. And the plaintiff is also seeking to recover punitive damages from the individual defendant as well as her actual damages, including cost of impoundment. That shouldn't have any effect on any public speaking tonight, but I would caution commissioners that since we are now parties to a lawsuit, that the commissioners would probably do well to limit your statements on the public record until such time as this matter is settled or goes to trial.
Good. Thank you, JR. And with that, Madam Clerk, we'll go ahead and have our first speaker. And again, three minutes. Please speak into the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I speak in support of Commissioner Carroll's suggestion in this morning's paper to revise the Burke County Animal Ordinance. I recommend that a committee of animal welfare advocates be appointed or established to work on this project. I further recommend that some of these people be volunteers from such local animal organizations as Reason, Cat's Cradle, A Better Life, and Partners for Cats. The ordinance needs to focus on animal welfare. Indeed, the first change to the ordinance should be the title of the ordinance. It should be the Burke County Animal Welfare Ordinance. The committee's approach needs to be deliberate and thorough. They need to research both federal and state law. They need to look at ordinances from other places in North Carolina, as well as across the nation, and extract the best principles from those ordinances. They need to also look at communities throughout the country, there are hundreds of them, who have achieved or are working toward no-kill status. And they need to look at how they're doing it. They also need to focus on the cause of the problem, which is the failure of people to spay and neuter their pets. The current ordinance has been in effect for five years now. During that five years, Burke County has killed 8,888 dogs, most of them healthy, 64% of the dogs taken in, and they have killed 12,395 cats, most of them healthy, 92% of the cats taken in. The only crimes these animals committed were to be born and not wanted. Based on the average cost per animal handled, that comes to around $900,000. Gentlemen, that could spay a lot of dogs and cats.
Ms. Gwen Hood.
Let me see. It's your name.
Gwen Hood. I am the president and a founding member of A Better Life Animal Rescue. Thank you, and good evening, and for giving us this opportunity to speak tonight. I am here to support Candy Bowman and her fight to get her dog back, Bella. And I'm here also to fight for Bella's life. There has been a lot of issues brought out in this particular situation that brings to light a lot of problems that we have. I do believe that there is a state law that requires someone to show proof of ownership when they turn in a dog or a cat, and they have signed the form for the life of that animal to be killed, to be destroyed. To our knowledge, there was no proof of ownership for Bella when she was turned in to be killed. Ms. Bowman has proof that she is the owner of Bella. Ms. Bowman has proof that she is the owner of Bella. She has diligently and very courteously, very, in, in much respect for all authorities, tried to show this proof that no one would listen to, and when she was told point blank, it doesn't matter. Well, I'm here to tell you that there's a lot of people that feel differently. Bella's life does matter. Every animal sitting over there that's waiting to die, their lives matter. Which brings me to a second issue I want to speak about briefly. I want to commend Commissioner Carroll for taking a very bold and a very strong support and stand on revising our current animal ordinance. We need more of you, which I have implored in an article that was on January the 10th, I believe. We were planning a petition to come before you to form a committee to do revisions for the animal ordinance, and I don't think we need that now. Hopefully, we can just move forward. The revisions are desperately needed. It would clear up a lot of things that have taken place that now Bella is in a fight for her life. There are many animal lovers in this county, and there are many people that would stand very solid behind us to do better. Burke County can be a leader in the nation, and definitely in the state of North Carolina, for us to move toward a no-kill county. We can do this. There are a total of six rescue organizations just in Burke County alone now. There's more help, there is more volunteers, there is a willingness. All we need is to work together, all we need is the will to do this. And it will be such a step toward the humanity that we want to present to the state of North Carolina, that we can be an example, that we can show that this can be done. We would like to work with commissioners to do that. We would like to work with other individuals that would love to be a part of this for the good of the animals of this county.
Thank you, Gwen, your time is up.
Jennifer Frisell.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to say I support everything that Ms. Hood just said. That poor dog does not deserve to die, and I pray that this comes to a good end. But I wanted to talk to you about Colwell County Animal Control, I've had some dealings with them, and I'd like for everybody to take a look at how they're doing things. They're not a no-kill, but they have drastically cut down the numbers that they're euthanizing, and that's because they have a Facebook page, they post all the strays on there, pictures and brief descriptions. That gives people an opportunity to come claim their pet if it's lost or picked up. And then they have the hold release date on there where public can come in and adopt those animals if they're not reclaimed. And they also have an adoption coordinator who works with rescues, not just in Colwell County, but all over the state. Reputable rescues that they have checked into and found out they're reputable. Now, they, they can't be certified by the Department of Agriculture because they don't have facilities, they're foster-based, but they have carefully screened and gone out to these people's homes and made sure that they're suitable to foster these animals. So they come in and pull animals regularly from Animal Control in Colwell County. And I personally have pulled for Carolina Boxer Rescue, which is across the state, and transported to a foster home. So this can work if, and, and our ordinance, according to what I looked at today, dated March of 2010, says that you can go to Animal Control if you're the first person that comes and pays the adoption fee, or that they go to Burke County Friends for Animals, or to a certified rescue that's certified by the Department of Agriculture. So I guess I, I know it would take some work, but I would really like for everyone to take a look at how they're doing it in Colwell and in other counties that have no-kill shelters. I think this can, this can work here. And I'd be happy to help in any way I could if there is a committee formed. And we also need to do something about the spay and neuter, offer free or low cost to folks that can't afford it or wouldn't consider it otherwise because of the cost. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I'm here also in support of Bella. I know this has been a big issue in the last couple of days, and on Facebook, the last time I looked, there was close to six, 7,000 supporters for her. I think that this is sad, that Burke County has come to this, that this is an issue, that they are asking to put a dog down because it has bitten someone. And not only that, but the fact that there is no proof that has been told that the dog bit anyone. And I think by far, if you need to look at the situation as a bigger picture, that you need to ask questions regarding what the dog did to come to this point. And also agree with other people that have spoke, that medical care, spay and neutering of pets has become a big issue. And I have read that where Mr. Carroll has mentioned that they want to work with the veterinarians here in, in Burke County to establish a plan to reduce the, I suppose, to reduce the amount of spay and neuter so that more people can afford to do this. I have, in the past, called and reported dogs that I have seen tied out on a leash, and I was told that as long as they had a house with three sides and a bowl of water and food, that was all that was necessary. Now, it doesn't say that if it's 10 degrees and the water's frozen, that that's an exception. It doesn't say if the dog is being taken care of, not only that it's being left chained outside in winter months, even summer months. Summer months is hard also. They risk hypothermia, they risk heat strokes, they, there's a lot of medical issues, not only just by leaving them outdoors in the winter. But we need to look at this overall. I think that Burke County can and does need to be a no-kill policy. And like I said, it's a sad, it's a sad situation that it's come to this. I think by working together, forming a committee, people that are relentless to find a, a reason for this, a reason for helping these animals to spare their life. I read also this afternoon that the annual salary of the people that work at the animal shelter was $60,000. I also feel that this could go a long ways toward medical care and spay and neutering. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, sirs. I'm a newbie at this, never been here in public before, but I feel strongly about this. My husband, Bill, and I have been property owners, business owners, tax-paying citizens of Burke County, and voters for the past 41-plus years. I have lived all over the United States as an Air Force brat. We choose to be here because this is the best area to live in. I commend Mr. Carroll for his wishes to change the ordinance. I think it's about time that we extend the same best practices to our forever friends. I encourage everyone to spay and neuter their animals. And as we've all seen repeatedly lately in, on the TV, wherever, if it's too cold out there for you, it's too cold out there for them.
Thank you, commissioners, for letting me speak. One of the first issues that needs to be addressed is right now, our current ordinance is only allowed for one organization in this county to take animals from Animal Control. That is the single number-one reason that we have the numbers that we have in the loss of life. With other organizations in this county that were allowed to go to Animal Control, there not be a favoritism, there not be a one-sided situation, these other organizations in this county can make a difference. That number can come down drastically, and gentlemen, it starts right here. I also want to address one other issue, and that's low-cost spay and neuter. Now, it is my opinion, my idea, as far as veterinary services, in comparison, if you practice law in Burke County, you're in a pool to provide pre-services, legal, free legal counsel. There is no reason, with all the veterinary services that we have in this county, that everyone could not be on board. And in one month, with all the veterinary services that we have in this county, it's not a cost to that veterinary service, it is a tax write-off. It is their job also to be a part of bringing down the numbers, spay and neuter. This is not a one-organization or one-person agenda. This is the entire community in all of Burke County. Gentlemen, let's make something happen today and now. Thank you.
Jimmy Wakeford.
Hi, I'm Jimmy Wakeford, I, on the Board of Alderman up at Glen Alpine. Just a lot, lot of things been going on with the bond package, and the board wanted to come down and tell y'all we appreciate what you're doing for the county with that. We've seen a lot of improvements in Burke County economically over the last couple of years. BDI's doing a good job, Western Piedmont, there's a lot of positive things going on, and anything we can do to help your efforts with the bond package, just let us know. I mean, you guys are doing a great job of that. That will transform this county, literally. The second thing, you guys allowed us to work on a fire contract with Lake James. We'd hoped to have it done by the beginning of the year, but we've had a few personnel changes up in Glen Alpine, as y'all are aware of. We are working on it. We nominated, the board nominated Bull Pitts, or Mark Pitts, to do the negotiations with Lake James, and he's met with Rico a few times, they've got another meeting coming up, but we didn't want y'all to think we're just not working on it. We are, you know, just an update, I have some maps for y'all to show what we're working on together up there. I'll give them to Ms. Kay. And that's pretty much it. I've got two minutes left. Y'all got any questions?
Thank you, Jerry.
We appreciate y'all.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anybody that didn't get a chance to sign up that wants to speak, I, I know sometimes that you don't realize you have to sign up or whatever, but.
Why didn't you sign up?
Go ahead, come forward.
Go ahead.
Three minutes.
Hi, thank you, I'm Ann Fisher. I've had a long history with animal welfare, as well as child welfare in this county, since I've been here in the 70s, and I'm a founding member and director of the Burke Friends for Animals, and I was actually the first foster home and first home that adopted out a dog. But I wanted just to address, I'm glad that Mr. Carroll was interested in, in this whole issue of the ordinance, but I wanted to just clarify some history, since when I first moved here, it was required about registration, and animals, dogs and cats had to be registered, both by the city and the county. So I often wondered whatever happened to that. I'm sure it was a very overwhelming and a difficult task to enforce, because as you mentioned, as you can imagine, with so many dogs and cats out there, a lot of people don't want to own up. But here's, here's one of the kickers, is that when you file your property taxes, it was, if you, you had to answer a question whether you owned a dog or not, and did you own a female dog. Well, the females were discriminated against. So from the get-go, we got a problem. Because if a female was spayed, fine, you didn't, you didn't pay a tax. If the dog was unspayed, you paid a tax. The males, male dogs were never addressed, whether they were neutered or not. So if you go back into that area of registering, make sure, and property listing, that the animals are treated equally, male and female. But again, I think it'll be an overwhelming task, but I don't know how effective that will really be, but if you ever get back to the property tax thing, that definitely needs to be addressed. Thanks.
Thank you, Ann. Just one more, one more speaker, one more speaker, go, go, come over.
Thank you very much. My name's Debbie Hawkins, and I'm actually the vice president for Reason, which is our local spay and neuter program. So obviously, we've not gotten the word out as effectively as we'd hoped. We've been in, in position for about four years, and over the course of that four years, the number of animals who have been killed at Animal Control here in Burke County has dropped considerably. So I just wanted to make sure people were aware, we do, we do offer low-cost spay and neuter services to people here in Burke County who qualify for our program. We have published information in the newspaper, we have a Facebook page where we publish our data that shows how many animals have been, gone through the surgery program, and how many animals have been, how the animals have decreased over the years as far as who's been killed. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, we will take this into consideration, and we thank you all for your comments, and we'll be working with our county attorney on, on different things. As he said, we cannot make any comments on this at this time, so again, we thank you all for coming, I know you're very passionate, and, and again, we thank you for being here tonight. And with that, we'll go down to item nine, our consent agenda, and I'll turn that over to Brian, to, I believe there's 18 items under consent agenda. Y'all can't leave, I mean, if you're here, you gotta stay here. We like having a full house.
How's Debbie, close the door?
Tell the sheriff to lock the door.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your consent items are, number one, BDI Economic Development Project Gray. Number two, Blue Ridge Community Action, Community Service Block Grant for physical year 2016 through 17. Item three, BOC Adoption of Rules of Procedure for 2016. Item four, Clerk Appointment to Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Item number six, Clerk Appointment and Removals to the Board of Adjustment. Item seven, Clerk Reappointments and Removal of BRCA. Item eight, Community Development Resolution to Appoint Review Officers. Number nine, County Manager, Transportation Involuntary Mental Commitment Respondents. Item 10, Appointments to the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Item 11, Fire Marshal Appointments to the Local Firefighters Relief Fund. Item 12, Fire Marshal Emergency Services Rescue Franchise for Anola Volunteer Fire Department, Incorporated. Item 13, Fire Marshal Request for Approval of a Purchase Agreement Between Local Government Federal Credit Union and Triple Community Fire Department, Incorporated. Item 14, GS General Services Solid Waste Disposal, Installation of Landfill Gas Vents at the Kirksey and East Burke Closed Landfill Properties. Item 15, Senior Services, excuse me, Additional Funds for Home and Community Care Block Grant Item 16, Sheriff's Office Approval of Revised Records Retention Schedule, excuse me. Schedule, excuse me; Item 17, Tax Department EMS Collections Report for November 2015; Item 18, Tax Department Tax Collection Report for December 2015; and Item 19, Tax Department Release Refund Report for December 2015. That concludes your consent items, sir.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian on the 18 items for consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, would they be approved as winded?
Thank you, Mayor, for that motion. All those in favor, again, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. That passes 5 to 0. Thank you. That takes us down to our items for decision. Again, we have two items on there, and the first is the approval of the Broker of Record for Employee Insurance, and Rhonda Lee is gonna do the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In response to questions from the Burke County Commissioners back in the spring of 2015, the Human Resources Director, acting through the County Manager, issued a request for proposal for insurance broker and consulting services from qualified insurance broker or benefit consulting firms. The primary purpose of the RFP was to find a qualified insurance broker to assist the county with strategically planning, designing, and negotiating the best coverage and costs for employee benefit programs, including voluntary insurance products, and assist the county with compliance with federal reporting requirements of the Affordable Care Act. The RFP was issued on October the 2nd, 2015, and bidders were accepted until October the 23rd, 2015. We had six people, or six groups respond, not people, and these groups were Arthur, J. Gallagher &amp; Company, and their bid was $76,500. Eben Concepts was $36,000. ECM Ferguson Solutions was $80,000. JRW Associates was $67,509. Mark III Employee Benefits was $17,300. And USI was $75,000 to $90,000. Of the six proposals, they were all reviewed by the Deputy County Manager and Finance Director Paul Imes, myself, the HR Director, and the Assistant Human Resources Director Patrick McCoy. And based on the evaluation criteria contained in the RFP, there were two bidders that were selected for onsite interviews. Those were Eben Concepts and Mark III Employee Benefits. Based on those interviews, and the evaluation criteria and costs, Mark III Employee Benefits was recommended to the County Manager as the best bidder capable of delivering the best services to the county and its employees, both as insurance broker of record and provider of voluntary insurance products for the employees. At this time, I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
All right. We also had a committee, I think Jeff and Maynard sort of met with Rhonda, and maybe it'd be good to listen to their comments. Jeff?
Okay, Mr. Chairman. We did meet with Rhonda at the request of the, of the Board, reviewed the, the whole RFP process, talked through the whole process of submitting the RFP to the vendors, looked at, at some of the costs, looked at some of the impact on employees. There had been some concern that employees may not be able to keep their coverage. We wanted to be sure that folks do understand that the employees would be allowed to continue their coverage. They may not be able to continue to do that through payroll deduction, but they can do a, a bank draft, whatever method they choose to pay, if they're not eligible for payroll deduction in the future. In the end, we concluded that overall, the process would potentially save the county $8,000 to $10,000 in new reporting fees through the Affordable Care Act and other things by combining these services through one insurance broker. And so, Mr. Chairman, all of our comments were submitted to Commissioners and didn't receive any questions, but be glad to try to answer any question if, if there are any.
Maynard, get your take on that, too, please.
Well, we, as Jeff said, we met, we got our questions answered. We had some questions that followed after our meeting, and we got most of those answered. I have not seen the last sheet, but I think that we, we, we still, we did get the questions answered, but there's still a couple concerns from several of the Commissioners, and one of them, we, one of them is the Insurance Committee, which evidently was dissolved without our knowledge, and it's my understanding that they were involved at one point, and they voted not to go with Mark III. And that concerns me a little bit. And the other thing is, is if I understood, and I think I did, Rhonda Lee's comment that that insurance policy belongs 100% to the employer, oh, excuse me, employee. Burke County does not match it, they don't add to it, so every dollar that comes through these optional insurance plans belongs to the, to the employee. They did, excuse me, let me back up, and, and the reason that's important to me is that if they're doing 100% pay, they, if there's a choice of insurance companies, they should be able to, to get it. Rhonda Lee also, and I think this is important, Jeff, I don't know if you've commented on that, I might have been thinking about what I was going to say, but it is my understanding that if the insurer, if the employee wants to retain the insurance they got, they may, but there will not be a automatic check withdrawal, and neither will they receive the pre-tax benefit, which seems just a little unfair to me. I'd like to see that resolved. But other than that, I think that kind of covers it on, from our meeting's perspective.
Other comments or questions?
I have a question for the Commissioners that attended that meeting, I guess, to ask questions. I didn't see any list of questions that were asked and what the responses were from that meeting.
We, correct, we did not receive questions before the meeting. All the questions were asked by Jack and myself, I mean, excuse me, Jeff and myself.
Well, that's what I say, I didn't, I didn't read anywhere the, the questions you guys asked, what they were, and what the response was.
Well, Mr. Carroll, in, in our response, in the email response, we tried to cover all the questions that we had. Prior to our meeting, we asked Commissioners to submit to us any specific questions that any of you had. We didn't receive any specific questions. We went into the meeting with, with our questions that, you know, we hope to answer, and that's what we provided in this synopsis email to you. It's not in question-answer form, but certainly it's intended to, to answer all the concerns that we had and heard in the process.
Next question, Rhonda Lee. What happened to the Insurance Committee? And I suppose there was a resolution in 2010 to establish that committee. Is that right?
The committee has not been dissolved at all.
Well, the question is, in 2010, there should have been a resolution establishing that committee. Is that right?
I think there is, sir. I think there is. And it's advisory in nature to the County Manager.
That's what bothers me, you know, we keep ignoring resolutions that Commissioners pass, and then it seem, don't seem to me have any results there as to what should happen. I think when you dissolve something, except come before the Commissioners, and they share their thoughts on whether you're gonna interview employees or what. And that's another thing I, I want to ask. Do you have a list of employees' input that were, that were asked questions about what kind of insurance they would like to have or see?
The Insurance Committee met, it was in 2014, in the spring of 2014, and I have to clarify that the Insurance Committee has nothing to do with their group health or group medical. It was never designed for that. It was designed strictly for the voluntary benefits side. And yes, that committee had met during that time period. They did receive presentations from different folks that come in throughout the year. We have a plethora of folks that come through that want to sell insurance to the county employees, and there was no action taken, or there were no recommendations to the County Manager back in 2014. And so, when this happened with, with the County Manager to combine everything, the idea is that once we have a broker in place, and then there's voluntary benefits there available to those employees, that we could bring the Insurance Committee to review the offering of voluntary insurance products forward to, to the committee for their input back again to the County Manager, as the committee was designed to do.
Another question I have for you. You keep talking about Mark III, and the only thing we pay him is $17,000. So my question is, what is his compensation from the insurance company?
What was that question again, sir?
Mark III, we talk about his fee for his services, $17,000.
Yes, sir.
And he goes to the insurance company. Does he get a compensation from the insurance company?
I asked that question directly to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they said no. They gave us the numbers that I provided to the Commissioners just recently. That came from Blue Cross Blue Shield.
He didn't get no kickback at all, huh?
Not that I was told by Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Mr. Sheriff, I still got questions about this. My biggest one is the input from employees, employees' insurance, and apparently, to my knowledge, they didn't have any, any input into this contract, and the contract was written for three years. So I'd like to offer up a, a motion to remove this from the, the agenda, and start from scratch, bring the Insurance Committee back, interview some of these people, get their comments on record as to what they would like to see and what they wouldn't like to see, and then from there, if we had need time, continue the current contract through December 31st, 2016. By that time, we'll have time to go through all this and get all the questions answered, all the documentation that we need to make a decision on, and we can go from there and get all the questions answered, put this behind us once we're all...
That's in the form of a motion, Jack?
It is.
All right. You've all heard the motion from Jack, and that means Mark III would stay until December of 2016.
December 31st, 2016.
All right. Again, you've all heard the motion. All those in favor, please...
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, excuse, I'm sorry, Jeff. May I ask, does everything remain the same until December of 2016 as it currently is?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I, can I add? The agent of record, that agreement is in, it's when our plan year begins, that would be July 1. So that is the plan year that the agent of record for the broker is in place, too. So right now, we're currently with Mark III as our broker of record for our group medical, group health, and that goes through the end of June of 2016. And then that agent of record agreement starts, that would be July 1st, 2016, going through June of 2017.
Why can't we extend it for six months?
We could go ahead and extend it, but we would have to give Mark III notice, 30 days notice, that, that would end, we'd have to give that notice in November of 16.
That shouldn't be a problem, should it?
No, it shouldn't be a problem, sir.
I think that's the only fair way to do it, go back from scratch and get all the information we need from the people we needed from, and put this to sleep.
Any other questions before we vote?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I believe all these questions have been answered. I think the committee's met. This is a different process than we've had in the past. We're trying to pull all this under one brokerage, one broker. I think the questions have been answered adequately.
Any other comments, Brian?
The RFP was sent out. I kind of wonder about this from Mr. Simpson, if he would not need to reject the bids, and then this other thing, but you understand, you're costing the taxpayers of Burke County another $8,000 because the consolidation was going to result in you getting the services for this reporting for the Obamacare and the taxes for free. That was part of his bid. So I want you to know before you act, you're gonna cost the taxpayers of Burke County $8,000.
Oh, we spent a lot more money there on frivolous things, so I think we afford $8,000.
Other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, one more question, please, sir. Is there any additional cost besides the $8,000 that we're gonna incur if we move this forward?
We have an FSA administrative fee that Mark III was gonna cover as well. Right now, the contract for the reporting for the Affordable Care Act is $4,000 a year. That was kind of a one-time deal from this group to do that for us. We anticipate that that may be as high as $8,000 for the next fiscal year, and then with the flexible spending account, that's upwards of $3,000 that we would be paying as well, that Mark III would cover for us if we went with that group. So it's about $11,000, not in this fiscal year, but next fiscal year.
Another question I'd like to ask you, there was article in the paper last Sunday, I believe, about Blue, Blue Cross and Blue Shield having problems. Is those problems affecting any of our employees?
No, sir, they're not. Those problems that they're having are glitches with their, their independent customers, not their group customers. These were people with, like, individual policies with Blue Cross Blue Shield through the Affordable Care Act, so we have had no issues with Blue Cross Blue Shield from a group standpoint.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, can you have the clerk to repeat the motion, please?
I was hoping somebody would ask. Commissioner Carroll's motion was to remove this item from the agenda and start over from scratch, bring in the Insurance Committee back, have them interview employees, find out what they want, continue the current contract through December 31st, 2016, which is time to get all questions answered.
You're good.
So if I understand, they're gonna give them a contract for a year, by that time, we're supposed to have the Insurance Committee back, and we look at it in a year, is that correct?
Well, first of all, we're gonna have to find out who the, where the committee, committee's at, are the people still available or what?
Some of them have retired.
I do have a question about the purpose of the Insurance Committee. If it was merely to do voluntary benefits, that's, that is only a small segment of what is before you here as the insurance broker of record, and working with us on our health insurance plan, telling us what trends are as far as our usage, and guiding us as to how much money we need to set aside per employee for health insurance, and other issues that are part of that service. So the, the Insurance Committee would not be in the business of, to me, giving us this group any guidance on the insurance brokerage services. Again, if they approve this, and they will be consulted, the Insurance Committee will be consulted at the appropriate time about what benefits could be made available through Mark III, or whoever they, they choose to retain to, to help with, with those particular benefits.
Other comments, questions?
So, so what we're talking about with this motion is rejecting all bids and putting it out for bid at some time later? Is that, is that my statement?
I think we'll have plenty of time between now and, and the, end of June to send out another RFP and get the replies back, and we review those and see what transpires there, and we've got six months to process it.
Okay, well...
Is there a problem with that, JR?
No, that, I mean, there's not a legal problem, but the, you know, you're never gonna get bids as low once everybody knows what everybody else's, has bid the first time.
No, I don't, I wouldn't argue with that, but I, I don't think that would happen. No, I don't, I wouldn't argue with that, but I don't think that would happen.
All right. Anything else? All right. You've all heard the motion. Please raise your right hand if you're for the motion. That passes three to zero, three to two, I'm sorry. All right. The next item of business is the appointment to BDI. We received additional application from Ron Lewis for consideration. We also have Scott Mulwee. Be happy to open the floor for nominations to serve on the BDI board.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Scott Mulwee.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Ron Lewis for that position.
All right. All right. A motion to close nominations.
So moved.
All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We'll go ahead and take them as they've come in. All those in favor of Scott Mulwee, please raise your right hand. All right, that is three to two, and that would mean that, I believe that Scott Mulwee would have the position. I don't think we need an additional motion on that. All right. Under reports and comments, our first thing is committee reports, and we were going to go ahead and give all the commissioners, I think they wanted a little more of what's going on with the different commissioners on different boards, and we'll go ahead and start. Jack, do you have any comment from any of the boards you're on, or?
Well, JCP, the only thing that we're in process doing now is sending out monitors for, monitor each entity that provides services to the kids in the county. So we should start that right away and should be end of, end of January, so I'll probably talk about that next, next month, how that turned out.
All right. Jeff?
Ms. Chairman, I serve on several committees and boards. EMS Quality Management Committee, we meet quarterly with, our next meeting this month. This committee, just to give a little synopsis of what they do, brings together all of the providers of EMS and fire and rescue and hospital. All these providers come together and talk about what's going on. It's an open forum for all of our EMS players to come together in the same room, discuss operations and needs throughout the system. And really, it's been amazing to me since serving on this group, how well our EMS folks meet and come together and really work to solve problems that are real problems to them, and without the barriers between each group. And so I just want to commend them for the excellent work they do. Much of that is brought together through our outstanding medical director, Dr. Hawkins. He has led this group through some really innovative processes, new protocols even over this past year. I hope that you've had an opportunity to look at his report that he provided also this month for us. I also serve on the Smart Start Board. That board meets about five, six times a year. We met last week and reviewed services, financial records of this agency, and all the work that they do in relation to early education for our children in the county. Continue to coordinate excellent early childhood daycare and learning programs for all of the eligible children in the county. Then thirdly, I also serve on the Department of Social Services. A board, this board, this department has been extremely busy this time of year with crisis intervention funds, and I'll just give you a few numbers to let you know where we stand. In October, funds were released for crisis intervention, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred nine dollars, and that was depleted by December the 15th. Then the Low Income Energy Assistance Program began taking applications December 1st, and as of January the 15th, we have already dispersed two hundred twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars of the three hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars that is allocated. Just keep in mind that these two very busy programs come along at the same time as all of their normal routine work that's going on, serving the thousands and thousands of Burke County citizens that they see every month and deal with. Another item of note is that there's no longer a wait list for childcare subsidy, so I want to take this time to let our TV audience know, and perhaps any of you guys that might still be in the audience, if you know folks that might be eligible for childcare, and maybe they were on the wait list previously and folks have moved. Every effort has been made to try to contact those folks, but because of our mobile society, it's easy to lose track of where folks are. So if you know folks that might be eligible for childcare subsidy, encourage them to come once again and make application for that. And then the latest NC FAST update in November resulted in more NC Slow. It hasn't moved any faster. In fact, several days it was down altogether. This is, of course, the state's system to manage all the DSS services. We had a hundred and ten reports of child abuse incidences in December, as well as seventy-seven cases to follow within home services. We currently have a hundred fifty-eight children in foster care and completed twenty-eight adoptions through the DSS in 2015. We also received thirty-four reports of adult care concerns. We currently have sixty-eight adults in DSS custody or care. What I've reported tonight is just the tip of the iceberg of what the DSS folks do every day. And again, I just want to commend this group, very difficult work that they do sometimes, and they're doing an excellent job to serve our county, and I just commend the work they do.
Good. Thank you, Jeff. I'll report on, Jack and I both serve on the Tourism Committee, and I believe our occupancy tax is up, but one great thing is, I don't know if you've all seen the trolley around town, but the trolley, for what we paid for it, we're getting a lot of use out of it, and if it doesn't even move from the space where it's at, we're still getting a lot of comments about the trolley. So I think that was a win-win situation. On the COG board, you've probably been reading a little bit in the paper about all the problems they're having in Hickory with low-income housing, and the COG is preparing to take that over in Catawba County. So that'll be a new field that we're moving into and something that's going to, we'll just have to see how it goes, but we've been asked to take that over at the COG. Health Department, I think we talked about the doc last week. I think Rebecca made some comments, and we're, I guess, utilizing just temp doc now for that program, so we'll hope we can solve that problem pretty soon. Maynard?
I'll continue with mental health, since we were blessed with an award this evening. It's doing marvelous. When I go to some of the statewide committees, meetings, and conventions, I'm, it's, get comments quite frequently from people, say, "How y'all doing that?" We're evidently getting a lot of attention statewide on how good the mental health thing is running, and again, we're serving more people collectively than when we were apart, and yet we saved thirty million dollars a year. And they are continuing to work ways that they can save money and increase the people that they serve, and we're taking part of that, as the lady indicated, and put it in programs that have not yet or ever been instituted in our area, as far as I know. So it's running good. And I'll switch to Clean Air and Water. That was split into two committees for years, and they have been doing so good, it's now only one committee. We had a hard time convincing and getting things done as soon as we would have liked to on that, but the big, big deal was that the people putting most of the particles in our air was coming from outside our state, and that was Tennessee and the Ohio Valley, and it was their power plants. So it, by getting those up to snuff and working on the new gas and new diesel formulas, et cetera, et cetera, one of the big things, and you don't hear this much, is the fact that some of these new motors for the big guys, who used to get three, two or three miles to the gallon, they're getting six and seven, which means a lot less fuel is being burned by the freight haulers. So I think that's an important thing to point out. On Parks and Recreation, we have, of course, have Gary Triggs now as the manager. We've had a hard time getting the board field, just from all the changes that's coming on. We did have a quorum at our last meeting, a couple months, we did not have a quorum, but it's moving along, and I would, I have told Gary, we want to get those reports again that tells you and informs you, you know, how many teams, how many played, how many visitors are watching it. It's, it's coming along real nice, and we do need, as a request, need to look at that field on reap and get four ball fields down there. It stays full about two-thirds of the year, I think, but if we had those other ball fields, we'd have it filled up probably every weekend. And I believe that's about it.
Good. Thank you, Maynard. Johnny?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I sit on two boards. I'm going to report on tonight, the Burke Quality Water Board, and also the Library Board, and I supplied you with two healthy reports from both of those places. On the Water Board itself, that's made up of Brentwood, Burke County, Rutherford College, Valdez, Morganton, Eckerd, and Hickory, along with Rhode Hisps. Had a meeting today, matter of fact, and I think the biggest topic of discussion was Flint, Michigan, and the water problems that they have up there. And we are assured by all of our water cooperative people and boards, and that we have no water problems, that we could experience with that. Morganton said that if you'd look at the Flint episode, that would be the epitome of how not to run a water corporation, of all the things that they did up there. Most of what happens in the, in our different entities is repair, repair, repair. They are replacing pipe all the time. The great thing I can report from the Water Board Committee is that they're adding taps every month, so that means housing is, come back to Burke County, we're building houses along the county. So everybody reports, every meeting that we have, that they're supplying new water taps, which I think is just tremendous for us to experience that. Moving on to the Library Board, again, that was a healthy report there, and you saw a trustee report for 2016 of where the library was going to go. There are new readers every month. It's, the library is just going by leaps and bounds. It's a good, bad problem. We're probably going to have to take a long look at our board, along with the other folks that supply money to libraries, how we're going to handle it in the future. Now, with the Cole House project in Valdez, it is almost done. It didn't get to be what we wanted it to be, but it turned out to be a really good, good project, and obviously, we, looking at Hildebrand, where we moved over, I think the folks in Hildebrand have been the most excited folks I've seen since we've opened up that new library in Hildebrand, and then the prospects of opening the Senior Citizens Center along with the new library. I think everybody is happy. So for the two boards of Ivan, they've done a tremendous amount of work. They're made up of good, good people, and both, the library is growing, and the water portion itself, like I say, we're adding taps.
Good. Thank you, Johnny. With that, staff, JR or Kay? Brian, any comments that you have, or?
In the February meeting, we'll have the summary of accomplishments for 2015.
JR, anything?
Yes, sir. If you recall, at our last closed session, we discussed the settlement of the lawsuit, Burke County versus Larry Joe McGee and wife Naomi S. McGee. Pursuant to your instructions, we have, we have gone forward. All the parties have agreed to settlement, and all the parties have signed off, and Judge Irvin signed the injunction on January 7th of this year. The court entered a permanent injunction forbidding the operation of a shooting range, as that's defined in our ordinance by the defendants on their property. The court found that the defendants were operating a public nuisance and placed restrictions on any discharge of firearms upon their property, which restrictions will begin thirty days from January the 7th. And both the Sheriff's Department and zoning compliance have authority to enter onto the property at any reasonable time to investigate any complaint or allegation that the injunction isn't being complied with.
Good. Thank you.
I've got a copy to give to the.
Any action? We don't have to take any action on this, right?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, JR. Kay, anything? Any other comments from the commissioners?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I do want to mention the bond package one more time. That comes before us on March the 15th, when we, in the primary season, and go to the primary for the election. The committee, a committee has been, being established at this time under the auspices of ag extension. They have been tasked with the responsibility of getting that committee together. I have been named chairman of that committee for Burke County, or co-chairman of that committee for Burke County. Our first goal was to get people on that committee, and we've identified about twenty people, some of them here tonight. So our next process will be for this committee to meet, and that committee will then begin an education process to the different, we'll be going to hospitals, we'll be going to churches, we'll be going to Rotary Clubs, we'll be going to the doors of anybody that will let us in. We have a very succinct ten-point presentation that we're going by. Dr. Helmick, who is here tonight, has already gone to a number of places and made a presentation. I made a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce. Again, Burke County will realize as much as ninety-one million dollars, and we do have to remember that there is in excess of three hundred and sixty-seven million dollars for water and sewer projects that we can apply for. The Water Board was very appreciative to hear that today, and they're already making plans to get with the Western Puma Council Government, to see if there's any projects that we actually can move or bid for early on in the process. So I would encourage folks that are watching to please remember that that is on March, well, early voting starts on March the 3rd, and then election day is on March the 15th, and it will be on that vote to vote for the bond package. So I would encourage everyone that does not know about it to get with, you can call me, you can call Dr. Helmick at the college, and we will supply the list to the newspaper, who has done an excellent job reporting about the bond package, if anybody has any questions.
So Johnny, the vote isn't in November, it's in March?
It is in March. It's March the 15th during the primary.
A lot of people don't understand that, that it is in March.
Yes, sir.
All right. Kay, we'll go to the vacancies.
Ms. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jack.
Comment, another comment on this dog situation. I want to point out one thing, that Ms. Bowen took documentation to Animal Control, tried to give it to Sergeant Townsend out there, and he refused to look at it or even take it. And I don't know why it takes so long to do an investigation. To me, should have been call whoever brought that dog there, to call her and tell her to come back and bring documentation to supporting her contention that that dog belonged to her, or either it didn't belong to her, then it would have been over with. So I think there's a breakdown there. And another question is, I don't know if you consider doing a work session on goals for the coming year. It's getting long in the month, so. Set out, talked about our goals, but I think we need to establish some priorities, kind of sort them out.
Well, I was hoping staff would sort of take and prioritize those, the ones that we can do and can't do, and then bring them back to us.
That'd be good.
Excuse me.
I think we need to do that, you know, pretty soon.
All right. And then, anything else, Jeff, or anybody else? Kay, the vacancies, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have the following opportunities for citizens to serve on county boards and committees: the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, City of Morganton Board of Adjustment and Planning Board for the ETJ, the Voluntary Agriculture Board, Burke County Board of Adjustment, and the Burke County Library Board of Trustees. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Thank you, Kay. We will not have a closed session tonight. It's not needed, and if you notice under item 14, this will be a recess, a motion to recess until Tuesday. And if you notice under item 14, this will be a recess, a motion to recess until Tuesday, February 2nd, 216 at 4:00 p.m. A motion to vote for the recess.
So moved.
All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Pose like saying that passes and the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Good. Thank you. We're adjourned.